I like the Shirley guy.
I like that shirt.
No.
We gotta give that back to the lunch party.
I know. Ain't got time to think about so much stuff.
Okay, I'm sorry, it's time.
Can you accept the word of the board meeting?
We'll go ahead and call a meeting order. Uh, opening prayer, Moeane Taylor, pledge of allegiance, Ashley Card.
Let us pray. Our righteous, merciful Father, it is with gratitude and gratefulness in our hearts that we approach you, your throne of mercy and grace. We offer you our thanks for all the blessings that come our way. We're thankful for how sufficient to be here this afternoon. We're ever grateful for Jesus and the sacrifice that he made for us. We pray that this board will always make decisions that are pleasing with you, that are in harmony with your divine order. We pray for the sick and the afflicted, whatever the case of sickness or suffering might be. And we pray that these people would be blessed as you would see fit. We ask that you will guide, guard, and direct us according to and by thy word. May we be steadfast, unmovable, always abounding in your word. And if we're found faithful in the judgment, we ask for a home in heaven. It is our prayer in Christ's name. Amen. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a motion and a second to approve the minutes for the December twelfth, twenty twenty-three meeting?
I make a motion.
Motion by Ricky Dotson, second of Ashley Card. All in, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, number five, uh, is there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Alright, we'll move on to six. Uh, approval of January ninth, twenty twenty-four meeting agenda. Can I get a motion and a second?
I'll move.
Motion by Mitch Stonecifer, second by Wayne Taylor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, we'll move on to the executive items. Approve only bid of three hundred and eight thousand, one hundred and forty-eight dollars for Lyxton Middle School HBAC replacement from action heating and cooling. Uh, this originally approved with all beginning of year bids and failed, failed of this.
I forgot, I couldn't see that I put it onto the whole board, so I won't have to do it on.
Uh, can I get a motion and a second for that?
I make a motion.
Second.
Motion by Mike Hayes, second by Mitch Stonecifer, really good question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number two, approve low bid of fifty-five thousand, four hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty cents for two hundred and fifty HP Pro Pro fourteen-inch Windows eleven student devices from Mallory Company. Uh, had to rebid due to distributor unable to get the devices on original bid award. Can I get a motion and a second on that?
I make a motion.
Motion by Shirley Myers?
Second.
Second by Wayne Taylor, any discussion?
Do we, um, is there a major difference in price? Do you know?
Uh, from the original? I don't, I don't think it was. I'd have to look. I could run in there and get it right.
No, it's okay.
I know, um, Brent said the other day that they'd went up a little bit.
Yeah, for teacher devices. Yeah, these are student, they're a little bit different. So the teacher ones had one of, for sure, but I think these were close. If I'm not mistaken, two about the same way they've been paying.
Anybody else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Alright, we'll move on to the consent agenda items. I'll read them all off and if it's good, we'll get a motion and a second to just approve them all at the same time, so. Number one is consider approval of one forty-two fiscal year twenty-four Title One A revision six. Number two is consider approval of one forty-two fiscal year twenty-four Title Two A revision six. Number three is consider approval of one forty-two fiscal year twenty-four twenty-first CCLC cohort twenty nineteen original budget. Number four is consider approval of one forty-two fiscal year twenty-four twenty-first CCL cohort twenty twenty-three original budget. Number five, consider approval of one forty-two fiscal year twenty-four Carl Perkins Basic Revision Four. Number six, consider approval of one forty-two fiscal year twenty-four Carl Perkins Reserve Revision Three. Number seven, consider approval of one forty-two fiscal year twenty-four Esser three point oh revision two. Number eight, consider approval of one point two fiscal year twenty-four Esser three point oh revision three. Can I get a motion and a second to approve those?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Darnan Hicks. Second of Ashley Card, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to the new business. Uh, item number one is consider second reading, reading of approval of policy six point four zero five one opioid antagonist. That is attachment number two. Can I get a motion and a second for that?
I make a motion.
Motion by Shirley Myers, second by Mitch Stonecifer, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consider approval of standard form of agreement between Overton County Schools and Midstate Construction Company Incorporated for the Overton County School CTE building. Can I get a motion and a second for that?
I make a motion.
Motion by Ricky Dotson.
I'll second.
Second by Mike Hayes, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consider approval of standard form of agreement between Overton County Schools and Upland Design Group Incorporated for Overton County Schools Miscellaneous Improvement twenty twenty-four. Can I get a motion and a second to approve?
I'll make a motion, second.
Motion by Mike Hayes, second by Mitch Stonecifer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do you deserve any of that? Can we read these off first?
Get a root, read it, read them off and then I'll, I'll mention something about two point four oh.
Number four is consider first reading of approval of the following board policies recommended by TSPA. Policy one point one oh two, board members' policy one point one oh five, school board legislative involvement. Policy one point seven zero one, school district planning. Policy one point nine zero zero, charter schools authorizing principles. Policy one point nine zero one, charter school application. Policy one point nine oh two, towards agreement. Policy one point nine oh three, charter school oversight policy. One point nine oh four, charter schools intervention. Policy one point nine oh five, charter schools renewal. Policy one point nine oh six, charter school revocation. Policy two point four zero zero, revenues. Policy two point six zero one, fundraising activities. Policy two point eight zero five one, debit cards, credit cards, and credit lines. Policy six point two zero zero, attendance.
And before we, before we mention anything further on that, I wanted to say that on policy two point four oh oh revenues, if you all noticed in there, there was two and you could pick, we needed to select the two. Uh, one was where we, uh, could have electronic payments and the other one was as the auditor recommended for us to, to not have electronic payments. So we needed to select there which one we wanted. The auditor though recommended us for us to, to not use electronic payments.
So their lunch payments that's online, do we still use that? So like parents can pay with debit card and?
No, I, I don't think that's what this is referring to.
Okay.
That, that's still good, that's still a good thing.
The, this policy is referring to when house our cafeteria has been able to use electronics.
No, that, that's fine. To be able to use that, that's okay.
This is referring to like fundraising and stuff, isn't it?
Like Apple Pay and, um, trying to think of some other words, Square and stuff like that, where you can take a credit card or Venmo and PayPal and stuff like that.
Fundraising activities or our, uh, support organizations like VCOs and stuff like that, them being able to take that stuff.
And for instance, like a concession stand, you know?
Yeah.
And that was her point because it would be so hard for the schools to be accountable for that money because they don't have reports.
There's fees involved with that too, that would come out that you would not be able to calculate.
Right.
And that would go with the policy two point eight zero five one debit, debit cards, credit cards, credit lines for those organizations also. Because there's fees and different things with those that you have that normally you cannot have in a
School.
Yep.
So which one, which one do you guys want to go with? I think we should go with the one where we're not taking it. I mean, as long as we're good with our schools being able to pay, you know, that way. I think we go with the audit recommendation.
We'll go with the auditor's recommendation. Can I get a motion and a second to approve?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. Oh, Wayne, sorry. Alex. Make the motion, Wayne, make the second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Number five, consider approval of IPS intermittent central, central suppression testing procedure. Can I get a motion and a second?
I have a question. I don't relate. You're gonna get a parent to sign a waiver and you're going to rent glasses to the parent. Who pays for them?
Uh, the school system, well, what we were told that now is there, there will be no expense for the rent of those glasses. That expense is going to be covered, uh, and, and they're going to be, then the school system will just be able to use them. And those glasses will stay at the school and only be used at school. That's the way this is, where it came into it.
Teacher in the room would be responsible for them.
Yeah, and would be responsible for making sure that the child uses them for the one hour a day.
Day and they stay in the room.
I thought it's thirty, I thought it's thirty minutes a day.
I think it's an hour a day.
I think it's an hour because when I read it, they talked about it at, at the home. An example was they would do a half an hour, Allison, and they, or would say rest and go and do another half an hour. So I figured it was an hour.
Thirty hours, thirty days, an hour.
Yeah. So we're assuming that they just wear it during their regular school day, regardless of what it is that they are having math or, does it matter just one hour a day in the classroom?
When I asked him that, that was what he, that was what he said to me. It didn't necessarily have to be in the reading class. They didn't have to be reading for that whole hour, but just be wearing them for that hour a day. When they were doing some focusing in a classroom.
So the, they would just go and put their glasses on and wear for an hour in the classroom each day.
Yeah.
They have to wear them back.
That were consecutive thirty minutes.
It's thirty minutes?
Hours.
An hour, but thirty days. But thirty minutes at a time. They can't wear them like fifteen minutes and fifteen minutes and fifteen minutes. Or just total it out.
I'll, I'll check on that part.
It says over here.
I was under the, I, I need to look into that more against Al, but I, I was thinking it was an hour a day. And I agree, it shouldn't be five minutes, here twenty minutes.
No, we had to be in a, together, I mean.
Yeah.
Does it say here?
It just says here under ther, it says under therapy, it just says an hour a day can solve your child's reading problem as little as two weeks. So it doesn't say as far as the time, like fifteen here or there, but it's an hour a day.
It is an hour, but yeah.
It just says one hour.
It's right here in this one that talks about, it's the disclaimer in the third paragraph down. I thought I'd seen that, but I wasn't a hundred percent. For, for one hour per day while reading, writing, coloring, tracing, puzzle activities for a period of thirty to forty days corrects the ICD condition.
Oh.
He definitely said thirty hours. I specifically asked to clarify that. But when you mean thirty days, it's an hour a day. But Alex, I do think you're right though. It shouldn't be like five minutes now and five.
No, no.
Getting a bit consistent.
But they could wear them an hour a day until they reach thirty days and then their time, they finish the program?
According to the document two.
Does someone come back in and test them to see if it did them any good? Send your test number on the front?
He, he should be because he said that there was a test to do post, uh, to tell if the condition's cured or not. So there should be a process that he has in place to do a post test on those because I remember him stating that you can do the mirror test to kind of see if the condition's corrected or not.
Well, he also wants to archive the data for future implementation of program.
And, and one other thing I thought I'd mention to you is this top sheet that you all saw that just has the four bullets on it. Me and some of the supervisors, we, we come up with this as just a process of, of what we were going to implement and we, we tried to simplify it down. Uh, and then we, uh, we took that and we sent it to our attorney along with the next sheet, the disclaimer. Uh, and then the last sheet, the, the waiver, that assumption of risk, we sent all those to our attorney. And, uh, he edited the assumption of risk, he, he edited that one quite heavily. And, and I do like this, this version much better than the one that you all received the last time. But also the attorney felt like that these four bullets on the first sheet was very adequate, simple, uh, and, and simple. And one, one thing we want the parents to definitely know, this is optional, it's not mandatory. It's just something that could hopefully help some children and that, and that's, that's all that we're trying to do is, is to just help some children. That's, that's our goal.
Can we post something on our website? Because I know when parents get a letter that says your child has this and they're going to have tons of questions and
Yeah.
maybe some tools they can look at.
Talk to if they have questions.
Oh, yeah, we, we, we addressed both of that. What we want to do is notify the parents of the information that, we want to notify the parents that there's information coming home. Notify them that, that this flyer, I think it's the third sheet, and the second sheet is coming home to them. Uh, and then also we want to put it on, uh, Facebook. We're going to send a messenger home saying the paper's coming home. Uh, and then we're going to have it on Facebook as well. So we're going to try to do numerous things to let the parents, uh, know about it, let them talk about it. And then if they have any questions, we're going to have the people that they can contact at the school or at our office either one. Uh, because I, I do think that this will cause some questions. Uh, and, and another thing, if the parents will be there while the, while the doctor is doing the test, we, we don't care for that either. The initial test is like a, a ninety-second test if I understood him right. So, so, you know, it's mainly, it's what we did here. So if, if the parent needs to be there, we don't care. We, we welcome them there while you're in that time. So we, we want to be real transparent with this and let the community know what we're doing and the purpose of it. And I even, I even wrote a purpose here and like I said, I sent it to the attorney and, uh, to make sure that, um, that it's, it sounded good and sufficient and he, he felt like it sounded sensible and, and sensible as well.
And motion, your motion. Motion by Wayne Taylor.
Second.
Second by Ricky Dotson. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Alright, we'll move on to special recognition. OCA, Jennifer Allard.
Hi there. Um, most of y'all probably know that the legislative session kicked off today. Um, we're kind of been watching with very interested eyes to see about the voucher program that's being in the initiative that's going for that. There was also some talk last year in the fall and even in the spring, uh, House Speaker Cameron Sexton talked about rejecting federal funds. It's very concerning that funds our special ed programs and our economically disadvantaged. Um, they're saying, oh, the state has plenty of money to cover that and all that. It's very concerning to the classroom teachers that that pool of money might not come. And the reason for that is to get around some of the federal stipulations that are attached to that money. But then I saw an article that said Tennessee would still have to follow those stipulations even if we didn't take the money. So I don't know what's going to happen, but I just wanted to call it to your attention, let you keep your eyes out and maybe voice your opinions if you chance, get a chance to talk to any lawmakers. Because we, we want to protect our public schools, we want to protect our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we don't have any public comment, but, uh, we do have, we want to recognize the Overton County Basketball Varsity Tournament winner, winners. The Boys Wilson Elementary and the Girls Richmond Elementary. Uh, congratulations to both of them on their, their success. And also Jeff Hammack acquired the state electrical license and Brandon Wood acquired HBAC certification. So a lot of hard work out there and we appreciate everything that they've done. So, um, that finishes up the meeting. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion.
Motion by Ricky Dotson.
Second.
Second by Mike Hayes, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, we'll move on to the work session. First thing up is to discuss an additional bus mechanic position.
That was presented to me to put on the, uh, put on the work session. So. That's why I'm here. I just, I got this information on this sheet from Jason Cantor, our transportation supervisor. And that, and we're running thirty-three buses a day. Oh, no, I'm telling you wrong. We've got thirty-three buses in the fleet. We run twenty-six routes each day. We have four sub-drivers, two of them drive full-time in Richmond, one at Wilson, and one at Lexington. So we run a, a total of twenty-six routes each day. And Jason is coming in at, I think eight o'clock of the morning and he works till four of evening. So there's nobody in the bus garage of the morning from six fifteen to seven fifteen till Noah gets back because Noah's driving the bus. So there's nobody there up in the morning to go out if somebody broke down. And then Jennifer, she, she gone through, she drives the bus. She's over there as the secretary and helps with the paperwork. But she's gone, she drives the bus. There's nobody in there of the morning and they're needing some help. And Jason talked to Donnie and I, I just went by there to talk with Noah the other day, took him a check for some cash he'd sold in. And bus inspection's coming up the twenty-fifth of, of January and he, they're needing some help. And I, I'd just like for us to look at that and see what we can do. And if we can do something, if we can hire somebody, if what everyone's wanting to do, I'd like for whoever that person is, a stipulation that they have to get their CDLs if they work in there. But, I mean, they're just, they're short of help. Now, Noah's got lots of days. He's, he gonna start taking some days off. And, uh, and I, I mean, some days, I mean, Jason's, Jason's got a full load on him trying to keep it all going.
How many mechanics do you have?
So he got Jason, when he, when he can mechanic, he gonna get the mechanic all day long when he dealing with parents and buses and Noah Hanson. That's it. We got going. But Jennifer does a lot of paperwork. Of course, she does a great job over there and, but, uh, they both said they's needing some help. And it's a, it's a pretty big job to keep all the buses are going. And like I said, we're short, they're short of drivers. That, that hurts because like Noah's having to drive and he don't care to drive, but and, and that's like him seven, over, or some of the routes is seven and a half. Some of the drivers are running around in a half a day. You know, we tried to consolidate because we can't get, can't get the drivers. So, I mean, it's up to y'all. I just brought that before yesterday. I told my, I've asked about it and talked to Donnie the other day and and then Jason come, he's talked, you talked to Jason. I, I just like for us to consider and think about it and see what we want to do about it. When did you say the rest of the year? The twenty-fifth of this month. But some of the buses have been expected and I think he told me the other day the twenty-one's and twenty-two's have been expected. They come by and done their murder. Something about a new rule or a new law or something on that, they could do that and other buses have to be inspected then. That's a, that's a, Wayne knows, but that's a pretty big deal on bus inspection and.
I know, I know with mechanics, it's kind of a high-demand job out there. I, do you think we could attract somebody by doing a part-time, a four-hour a day or?
I don't know. I mean, my, my thought too is, I don't, I mean, by the twenty-fifth or whatnot. So, I mean, we couldn't never get anybody hired for the time we're doing that. So, I mean. But it's if we get to running down the road, like I said, Noah starts, he got a pile of days built up. He's going to retire one of these days. I don't know when it'll be, but if he starts taking off, we might not have nobody there today to be in the camp. If Jason's padded up to him, Jason can do some, but he's padded up a whole lot. And we, we got to get him to school. Can't get him to school, they can't learn. So, I mean, it's just something to think about and josh, josh some ideals around. I just, I just presented that to you and show you what, what's actually going on over there.
Is our mechanic certified mechanics? Is anyone?
Is there a?
I think. Certified mechanics? Does anybody know?
I think Noah is.
No, I can't answer it. I don't know. I'd have to ask them. Noah's worked there since he got out of school.
Yeah.
I don't know. I'll check with you in a minute. I'll send a text out to everybody.
So actually you only had one full-time mechanic. Because Jason's actually the supervisor.
Yeah.
Plus he does some.
Yeah, he is, what he can.
I don't want to pass me like a supervisor that's wholly different as a supervisor.
Yeah, and had three mechanics.
Yeah, yeah.
But we.
Running forty-one routes at that time too.
Yes, that's true. But they are needing some help. It's something to think about and yard around and do some thinking on it. That's as long as I'm asking to do.
Yes.
Uh, is anybody else have anything on that? We'll move on to number two. Uh, to discuss an SRO position for Reach Academy for the remainder of the school year.
I'd like us to work a few better than that. So that's why I asked. This year we, so the city and the county received funding for, uh, for each of the schools to have one SRO. Uh, and, and you know, used to the money come through this office and now the money goes through the city and the, and the county. It comes through, comes to us differently. Uh, and, and I was very excited about that and I was thinking that that would take care of things. Uh, but Reach Academy though, uh, we would, it would really be beneficial, at least at this point right now, if we had, uh, an SRO at Reach Academy. What I had in mind was, uh, uh, maybe us paying half and the city paying half. You know, splitting it, splitting the expenses. And, uh, I, I mentioned that to Ray Smith, the police chief, and Curtis Hayes, the, the mayor. And they said at this point they couldn't do it, but that going forward next year, they could, when it's budget time, they would look at trying to get that into budget. They would promise me that they would look at it and see if they could. So I felt like that was a pretty good, uh, it would be a pretty good deal for us if we could, because at Reach, there's, there's times when, when that would be very, very beneficial to have an SRO over there. Uh, and, and another thing that I, I kind of wanted to share with you is, uh, we're not the only school because, because I asked the other day when I was around a bunch of superintendents. We're, we're not the only school system that even though, uh, we've got one for each school, there's a lot of, uh, other districts, like for instance, White and Putnam. They are, they are doing the same thing. They are, they are paying, uh, for extra SROs as well. Because like they have a very large high school, uh, it's my understanding that those two systems have, have an ex, they pay for an extra SRO for their large high schools. So this is not something uncommon, you know, that other districts do this as well. And I think that's all I was going to say.
Does the SRO at EH, do they go there to towns? Because they used to.
They used to, but I don't think they do as much now as they did. And, and, um, that's just something I thought we could, uh, I, I'd like for y'all to think about and maybe next, at the next board meeting, we could, we could look at that closer at that, at that point.
What's a base salary for an SRO?
I'll get with you on that.
Oh, oh.
Do you know, Crystal, do you know?
We have an amount of overtime that.
The, the amount that we, we roughly know included this over, included overtime. So I'd, I'd be hesitant to say right now.
So we wouldn't get any help the rest of this year?
No.
And we would just have to do it for next year.
And then next year, hopefully if everything went good, according to Curtis and Ray, maybe we just have to pay half for the whole year. That's.
Do they have someone available to fill a position?
They said they did.
They did?
Yeah. Yeah. Ray said he was, felt very fortunate at this time that he did know of someone. And that was, that was, uh, maybe a week and a half ago, I assume that, that he still does. Does anybody else got anything?
I got one more. I tried to talk to him a while back about the, like if a principal's out for over a six weeks period of time and somebody finishes the whole year out or three or four months, I'd like for us to look at that somewhere down the road about the supplement difference. That, that person will get, in any position, like if we get the supplement difference. I think now, out of order of policy exactly says if it's six weeks, that we allow them to be offered for anything. I mean, I don't know, I'd have to look it up, I ain't looked it up. But anybody that have over, like a maternity leave over six weeks, if that person fills in, to say a lady was a principal and had a baby and she's out for the rest of the year. Should the vice principal get that part of that supplement for the month after the six weeks to, to finish out the year?
If I'm not mistaken, that, that our policy doesn't mention anything about that. But if you all, if you all wanted it to, whatever you all decide is for, of course, you all decide that and decide the number of days that if, if we have like an interim principal type situation, uh, whatever you all decide, uh, I'll see that it's carried out. Uh, I think if you all do that, you ought to, uh, definitely pick a number of days, you know. For instance, most maternity leaves, if I'm not mistaken, and correct me if I'm wrong, it's like thirty, uh, six weeks, so thirty, so thirty days, thirty school days, of course. And, and I think, um, I think assistant principals are fine and stuff like that. I think they're fine with that. But if you all wanted to pick a, a, a number of days that exceeded that, to, to have in our policy going forward, if you all decide to do that, uh, I'll see that it's fine.
Sure.
Have this problem when you do a process, just make a policy.
There's, there's gotta be, there's gotta be some thought at the end of this though, cause if not, you're gonna be paying a supplement for a principal and they're, or supervisor, whatever their title or category is. And they're, I'd work for thirty percent of the year, well then you're gonna be paying that sixty percent. Plus that's, you know, you're paying, paying two supplements that way.
You're double paying, yeah.
And then if you pay somebody that supplement, are you gonna say, oh, after this right here, we're taking it back from you?
So there's gonna have to be some thought into that process is.
Look at the leave policy, cause you probably receive your normal salary when you take the leave.
That's correct.
And so you would have to look at that policy too, if you're gonna take something away from someone on leave who had to and give it or pay to.
So a, a supplement would be separate from just a regular
Yes.
hour of the rate or daily rate, however that works out. So there's why it'd be a little bit of, of thought or research into that. Yeah, and you gotta really think about it too because, uh, a vice principal gets a supplement and a principal gets a supplement. So, you know, if I'm at two and four, so to speak, am I paying you an additional two or am I giving you the four? You don't need to double dip at the six, you know?
If you're a victim.
So you, you get the, the difference between.
Or not just raising your assistant to what the principal would, would be.
Yeah, but it's, you get the difference of what you're not getting now.
But it's unfair to ask somebody to step up and assume responsibilities and not want to compensate them for doing the same job that whoever's out for thirty or forty-five or ninety days. They were getting paid to do that job because there were responsibilities.
Right.
And so if you're stepping up to assume that role, you should also be gifted or benefit with the increase in, in revenue to, to account for those responsibilities.
Yes, and I, and I'm all for that, that's what I'm saying, is we, we need, it needs to be aligned where we're not double paying that supplement. For, you know, you don't wanna pay a supplement for someone that's not working, I hate to say it that way, but they're away from work, let's say it that way.
Well, I do too, and I mean, I'll go back to my experience when I worked at the Dairy Queen and I was the assistant general manager and then you had the general manager. Because the general manager, when she went on maternity leave, because I had taken that role as assistant general manager, it was just expected for me to pick up and take that over. I didn't get a pay bump because of that. They knew that she would be coming back and if she wasn't coming back, then they would say, hey, would you like to take this position or would you like to do that? I mean, there are certain times I feel that when that, if there does happen, it's, if you're, are a vice principal in there that if case of emergency and most of this is gonna be an emergency situation where they have to take leave, you're at the understanding with that position that, hey, I'm gonna have to step up and do this while they're on their emergency leave.
You want, kinda, can this more of that?
Yeah, I've, I've grabbed up an idea.
Just need to look at it so we make the rules.
No, I do nothing. I just look, look at, consider it, see what I need to, and go from there, draw it up.
Actually, yeah.
Yeah, I want to congratulate the basketball team. It was a great year to watch your grade school and watch Wilson. The boys win, it was, it's very exciting. The girls, I mean, it was a great year. And hope, hopefully gets beat tonight by Lincoln.
Yeah, we're beat.
Alice, you got anything?
No, I just, no, I would like to say congratulations to, uh, Coach Wells and the, the little boys there at Wilson.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, Coach Wells had, there is some very slim pickings there, but he, he did a great job. He, he, he worked really hard and like he went down, started recruiting his, all his second grade.
Recruiting at Wilson.
You know, uh, I, 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 I just, I had talked to him and to the boys.
Did a good job. Wayne, you got anything?
Sure. Alright, no, we. Darling?
No.
Uh, reminder, if you had paid your scholarship fund, say, Crystal. Be safe and stable.